All right. It is six thirty-two, September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to call the meeting to order. All trustees are in attendance with the exception of Brian Johnson, who is excused. He stands for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming. Before we get any further, we do have some public comment. So, public comment input, Tom Mills, could you stand and state your name, please?
My name is Tom Mills, delivered thirty-two seventy-four North Elmwood Drive. I appreciate all of the work that the trustees and the presidential officers have done, and I have some questions regarding new business and some of the wording and some of the content in there. And I would like to know if, after your discussion, you might answer my questions instead of asking questions now. If I could ask questions after you're through with your discussion, if that would be permissible with the trustee board?
Is this for the Elmwood Park sewer?
Pardon me?
Are you talking, what are you going to be asking questions about, Tom?
First, the new appointee had a question. A question about the kitchen update. A question about the renewal of City Racine Village in Elmwood.
Well, we can't really have, like, public comment input on every item, huh?
No, that's the only thing, that those items that I really had questions. If we have to prioritize them, I would go with the renewal first, with the park sewer and the kitchen update.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
And the next person, Sherri Glabell.
Sherri Glabell, thirty-four thirty, and Tree Court. And I'm just bringing up again the situation behind the Dollar Tree, all the garbage piling up. Ranters has been there for months, now does the couch, it's been there about a month.
And we have that coming up as well.
And who is in charge of it? Who has to clean it up? I know you're working on it, so what's the answer? Who has to keep that place as better?
So, John's disposal, they do the bulk cleanup.
Okay.
Probably like monthly.
And who pays for that? The village pays for that.
We're trying, if you have a solution, it's a lot better than it was in the past. But then, again, this summer, I mean, if you, when I took office, there was a lot of stuff back there. And with Lateria's help, we cleaned up a lot of it. She actually cleaned it herself a couple times.
Oh, so it's our responsibility?
But it is our property. And, you know, even if we close to the sign or if we had a camera back there, I just don't know if we're going to be able to give consultants not dump there. It's really hard.
Because when you first took office, I've been right, told you, I had to talk to a VIP at CBS, and they told us it was their responsibility. We tried it on speed dial. We tried that. Brian's gone, huh? They won't, they won't do it anymore. Interesting.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that personally, and it was a lot more than before.
Yeah, and I took a picture, sent it to them, and then, you know, this is crazy.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is.
And there's no, there's a sign back there, right? And people still, they still do it.
And it's right, as soon as you go past the sign and says, "Oh, come on, little Jabalwood", and they go, "Ooh".
Yeah, I saw that today.
It's our, well, now I know. That's kind of one of my things, so let me call Lateria.
Yeah. Yes, that'd be great. Thank you, Sherri, for bringing that up.
Then we're doing a bulk pickup on the sixteenth, actually, so.
It's coming up Monday.
Yeah, and we're thinking maybe we'll have to do something monthly, or, because it just keeps happening.
And I don't want it to become a monthly prop, like, I don't want people to think, "Oh, I'll just put it here."
Yeah.
So, if anybody has any suggestions of how to get people to not, I mean, I'm sure it's the people in the apartment, it's right around the corner there. And I don't know if we can ask the sheriff to sit there every once in a while and just keep an eye on it?
No, we haven't.
But, I know, it's one of those things.
But it's just like gang, the gang graffiti we used to have in the high school, as soon as it was on the wall, you had to get rid of it because it grew immediately.
Right.
You know, it's like, we see one thing.
Well, we did have a homeless person living behind the Dollar Tree for a while, and we, he did, Lateria actually found him, and then we relocated him with the help of the sheriff, so it's definitely happened there.
Okay. As long as there's no other public comment present, I'm going to move on. Can I have a motion to consent the agenda for July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four? I will make a motion to consent the agenda in minutes from July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Second? First by Stein, second by Justin Stewie. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, so passed. I would like to make a motion also to amend the agenda for today, September twelfth. I would like to add an item that's not on the agenda currently about the snow removal discussion and bids that we received today with the deadline, and it got left off, but we do have at least one bid, so I would like to discuss that. Can I have a motion, please? Well, so, okay. Second? First by trustee Stein, second by trustee Whittick. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Ayes have it, so passed. And I'm going to add that to the, our last, second to last item. Okay, reports, the sheriff is really busy, they never seem to make it, so they are not here, but I know that Kendall receives a report for August. President notes, a couple of things on my end, and Lateria and I talked, so we split up some of these talking points, just so you're aware. The new Little Library, obviously, is in the park. Do you have the other one still?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to grab that for you and see if Sherri even did it. So, I had a resident that gave a large donation, I think I talked about this in July, but now that we do have somebody that we hired to help with more maintenance around the building, I think, I think that, or the, around the village, I think we can have this done sooner in the fall rather than later. So, last year, we had a large donation for Little Libraries, and one of the checks was for five hundred dollars. And when we put in the small, the very first one, this resident was not very happy that that is all we put in, because she donated quite a bit of money. So, I'm trying to make it right, and so we got, and we had a second one, we just haven't heard it out yet. And then, Lateria looked at a couple of larger Little Libraries, because they are expensive, and we're going to put in a third one. And one smaller one will be for younger children, there'll be one for teens, and then the largest one will be for adults. And we'll do it as like a trio in the park, but I'm trying to make this right, and I'm just letting you know, because I felt really bad, but it was, it's been a lot. Having Kurt gone has been a huge hole in the village, and it's been a tough summer just getting things done around here. So, I asked for reparations, but that's what I'd like to do sometime before it gets too old. Speaking of Kurt, we are going to put in place a tree in the park, we're going to put a bench in the park with his name, and I already talked to Brad Jake about putting a stone out front with his name, and I talked to Laura to see what, how, what wording could be on there, I'd like her input on that. But I would like to move ahead with that, also, the fort is too old, because Kurt was a huge, huge help in our village, he did a lot, he saved us a heck of a lot of money with all the things that he did, and he was just, it's really hard, I'm happy. On the brighter side, Terry Gunn, who is my kitty-corner neighbor between myself and actually Kendall on North Elmwood, who's right across the street from Tom Mills, he has actually stepped up as our new hire for the maintenance position. Terry actually does this kind of work outside in the community, and also decided to take on the village as another job. And he has a bazillion tools, he is an amazing guy, we really need him. John Leonard is getting very tired, and some of the work John just doesn't feel comfortable doing in either of these areas. So, Terry took on that job about three weeks ago, he was gone for about a week in there, but he has already fixed the railing, I believe, out front, he's going to paint the bathroom floor, we met on a Saturday two weekends ago with John. There's some trees that he actually thinks he can maybe help take down the poles in the back, he's got a laundry list of things that he's going to help take down. He fixed the toilet in building one, we didn't have to call any plumber. And I told him, the punch list, the list he has does not have to happen all within a week, but within, you know, if we can get it done before winter, that would be great. He is an outstanding help right now, and I'm really, I told him, I completely do not want to exhaust you, so he's, he's really, really kind. So, if you get a chance and you want to meet him, let me know, he lives right across the street, he's very kind. The sewer grates on Oak Tree Lane, so we did have Greg from Forecome out and take a look at the sewer grates. They are, as you've seen, John Wilda has sent us lots of, what's John Wilda, right? Has sent us lots of emails, and this went back to when Chris and Ernie weren't off, or when Chris was our project treasurer and Ernie was president, and I was on the board as well. We, you know, it just never got fixed. And when Oak Tree Lane was finished, he was upset because the ground levels here and the drains sit really low. It is a tripping hazard, somebody could literally fall in there. So, I went and looked at it with Greg, and Greg said, "Yeah, this is not right. It has to be fixed." So, I'm in the process of getting a couple bids, I'm waiting for Reisman, we haven't heard from him yet. We did get one bid for this, at the top of my head, I want to say it was like around eighteen hundred to fix. It's two different, it's right at the end of their driveways, actually, somebody in the neighborhood, I think the woman that lives where these are tripped and did falls, yes, one nine ninety-five, and this was from one bid, from one of six. So, we're waiting on Reisman just to see what they would say. They helped with adjusting another Nile bus basin when that truck went over it on South Elmwood, I was like, "My first about them." So, we're looking at getting this done, I told him I'd try and see if we could get it done by the end of the year, but I do think, it definitely needs to be done. I don't really want to wait until the next real project, I'd like to get it done, so I'd rather it later. So, that's one thing I'd like to get off of our plate and just have fixed. And I did talk to Kendall this week about two things in the office. I wanted her to look into direct deposit for paying our maintenance guys, paying Lateria, paying themselves, paying us as board members, and also getting a debit card for Lateria, because we do run into times where Kendall's not in the office, or Lateria's helping with an event, and she needs to purchase things, like the Easter egg hunt. I had to go with her because I had one from when I was the events coordinator. So, Lateria, our, Kendall has looked into direct deposit, which she will be giving you a form to fill out if you would like your checks in direct deposit, it'll save us on postage and printing and all sorts of things. And then, she will help get the debit card for Lateria, so when we do have materials that she needs for new resident packets and whatnot, it'll just be easier to handle that way. So, those are all my presidential notes at the moment. I feel like there was one more, and I didn't break it down, I'm going to come back to it. You're going to say something, I feel like, "Oh, yes." Oh, and I did go to the RCICC meeting, which is with all the mayors, and it was hard because Jonathan Delvery has also left us, and Matthew's a big role in our community, because he's the one that started the RCICC meetings, and they are a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of, wealth of information. I got to talk to somebody, this is how I started, I talked to somebody about the sewer contracts that were under from the city of Racine, because we have not gotten any word, so that sort of got the ball rolling, sort of, but it's just a really, it was a really good meeting, and if anybody ever wants to join me, Lateria, she, she would have come, but it's like, they have these, and it's back to school, and she's with her kids, and I'm like, "Yes, I'm going to make it," but it's always a trying time. So, the next one's not until November, but it was, it's just really great, and there have been, we've got lots of good things I can give Kendall, and just some good ideas of things going on, and it's just great to hear about what's going on in the community. So, trustee Kendall, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, real quick, thirty-two thirty later, applied for a tree reimbursement, and Kendall will be sending the pictures, so I'll do it.
Okay, great.
A tree reimbursement?
Yes.
We have a tree program, a tree sharing program, did you know about this? It's been in the works, I think it's been around for five years or longer. So, if you, for a while, it was if you took down a tree, we would want to plant a tree in their place, but then we changed it to say if you, if you wanted to put a tree in place, or you didn't, you know, sometimes you just take down a tree because you don't want one, but if you did plant a tree, how much should they give?
Fifty dollars.
They give fifty dollars back. And we've had that in place for quite a while, actively brought that to us.
Okay, that sounds great.
I did remember what I was going to say, and it's going to be back on the heading again. Let's go. Okay. Trustee Johnson is not here right now, trustee Stein?
I have something, and I cannot really, I don't know what it is, so I will document it, bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay. Any word on gazebo?
I found a little bit of research, but I need to do a little more digging, the back of school is beating my butt off.
Okay, and I think, we're probably.
I did go, I've taken some pictures of gazebo's kind of in neighboring areas, I've kind of, you know, been walking around just to see what, I think we could do, and it would be a good fit, so I had some pictures and some fun stuff, but I'm kind of curious what our budget's going to look like and what our capacity is for that, so, I mean, you know, do anything from, something from Amazon, somebody actually really nice that could, you know, possibly, you know, bring income in on top of it, so. Just kind of thoughts on it.
Okay.
On that note, and start a event, they put a building up at Helford, that's about the size of that spot, maybe, yeah, drive past that one, and maybe you just give the load of the sugar there, oh?
I know.
Okay, let me see that.
And it might wait until next spring anyway, that's what I'm fine, but, okay. Trustee Stewie, do you have anything?
All right, just to go over upcoming save the dates, let's see, we have the car show as the next event coming up, and that's on September twenty-eighth, from eight to two. Last year was a massive turnout, we're expecting bigger this year.
Could you speak up just a little louder, please?
I'm really quiet. The car show is on September twenty-eighth, from eight to two, right here on the front lawn. Last year, there was around a hundred cars, we're expecting that or greater this year. It's really doing well. We're going to be doing the Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trot again, we meet at Kaiser Park and do a loop around the village on the east side of Taylor Avenue. We did that last year, and it was a ton of fun, the kids had a great time, it was cold, but worth it. And then, the Village Christmas Party is on December seventh, from twelve to two here at Village Hall. So, I got to kind of look ahead.
When was the Turkey Trot set up, right?
No, it was Thanksgiving.
Last year, it was going to be as well.
We did have a gift guard, I'm going to tell my kids, I'm going to tell my child we can't participate, it's easy cross-country, and, you know, we're just telling you, and I was like, "You can't, you can't run, no one, I mean, you can't run." Trustee Whittick, anything to report?
Well, the one thing I get, someone mentioned that, you know, they've gotten a notice about the state's, you know, giving a new resident in the village, wasn't aware of what is in that, and they just thought it was kind of a in-your-face thing, it's a little bit more presented.
A br- a little bit.
But other than that, they're just, and then just concerned about the sidewalks there on Taylor that are raised, just to make sure that, I don't know, if the residents or, I mean, the village isn't responsible, some can, so.
I don't think so.
They just want to make sure that none of them is back to the village if it's open, because there's some that are really bad, it's going to be a terrible hazard, so.
Okay. Before you go, you're next, I just wanted to also bring up, going back to the direct deposit and the debit card for Lateria, I did reach out to Kendall and Kelly this week. One thing that Laura Ruin always did with Chris was sit down with the budget once in a while and just look things over, and I asked Kelly and Kendall if they could set the date to make that happen, because that hasn't been happening, and I think that was more of a Laura than Chris, from what I got paid from Chris, but I, I think it's a really good check imbalance, so I asked Kelly and Kendall if they would do that. Thank you. And then, the other thing that I wouldn't remember, but I remembered, I know you cannot get into your email at all. Okay, and neither can Brian. So, we have, we have to fix that. So, I don't know if you can, I don't know if your hours allow you to hop in with Kendall at all to see if we can get, I don't know if you can fix that, Kendall, but I feel like we need to make that happen, because that's important.
That's why.
Yeah, I'm like, "Huh?", and so texting me, like, "Okay, I'm going to send it to your other email." I think that's really important, and everybody else can get into their email. Okay, and that's greater, so I'll go.
All righty, so we had a really good turnout, fortunate one, Taylor and National Light Out, so it's going to get the community to get together and see all the kiddos and parents. So, we want to add Trumpor Tree as an event for the village. It's in the newsletter that's going out, everyone should get it this week coming up. We did not officially put it in as an event that's going to happen, because we want to kind of gauge the interest in our community, so if we get fifteen, twenty people, we'll be good to go, and people can stop into the office and get a form to register your vehicle if you want to give candy out for Trumpor Tree. And that'll be closer to like the third or fourth weekend in October, if we'll have that. Again, that Turkey Trot that we're going to have, that's going to be on Thanksgiving Day at Kaiser Park as well, you don't have to register, just show up the day of the event, and we're looking forward to seeing you all. And then, the next thing, Kurt, Kurt passed away, so I did put in this letter memorial for him, we kind of talked about him and how wonderful he was, he was a very good man, and we also have an invite to this life celebration that's coming up in October, so we'll just see everyone there for Kurt. So, there's all the wonderful things going on. The next thing we'll be working on is getting some flash and stop signs over here, a link up to Taylor, because we have had a lot of accidents closer to Evergreen Academy. We did have a study done, about eighty percent of the time, people didn't obey, but it's just such a.
Because the sign was there.
Yeah.
I'm sure because the sign was there, it's why they were obeying.
Yeah, we had a speed detector unit there, and it kind of caught the data, but we do want to implement something, we don't want to make townie there, it's a school there, and parents coming in and out, so we do want to get those flash and stop signs. So, that'll be coming most likely by the end of the fall, we're working on application for that, we'll get a permit. Then, with the leases that we have, we did two lease renewals in building one, so we have another yearly lease for two tenants, and then for unit two B, we do have a prospective tenant now, we actually have two prospective tenants. We have the daycare, which we don't know if that made the fit, just because the last tenant found a church and was kind of not in the right spot, they like get quiet and the church, and so the daycare, so we're leaning more towards the other prospective tenant, who is actually a disurity, and for five years, like five years' lease, so it'll be long-term, and we're really hoping that they do sign, they come into the village with us. And then, speaking of leases, Evergreen Academy did renew their lease, and we did have something to fix with them recently, so it's good news that they told me that they have not broken ground at their new facility, so they could say, "Oh, I'm going to expect it."
Okay.
For the village, so.
Speaking of the new tenant, Grace Sivaglio did reach out, the new tenant would not be coming in until possibly spring, but it would be for the whole other side of that building, and, and if he wanted it, then he would work out a contract, so he would be paying a little bit, but maybe not the entire amount, but something to hold that spot, and it would be more than what we're getting now, and I think it's a, if he wants it for five years, I think that would be amazing. So, right now, I believe he's in Delton, the scene, and his contract with that building is up in March, so we're looking to see how we can make it work for him, because I think it would be great, it just, that's a great business to have, it's not another church, we have parking then, that's my biggest concern, we have a church here, we have a church here, we have a church here, and just, I always worry about running out of parking spaces.
Is that building two?
Building two, so the spa's on one side, Shelley's great, she's got a ten-year lease, I would love for him, since he came in, that would be a five-year lease, I think that would be great for us, and we're, we are, Lateria and Kendall are very worried about, "We need somebody in there." So, I'm really excited when Randy sent that to me, and I thought that was a great fit, so fingers crossed that it works. They did send a, and I did print it, Randy just sent us something about it. Oh, yes. Okay, good, so you can see this prospective tenant, if you would like to take a look. Two months free deposit, twenty-eight hundred on signing lease now, commencing rent on the first of the year on a graduated basis until June first, two thousand and twenty-five, at which point his rent would be fourteen hundred dollars a month. And then, he had a rent proposal, now this is just his proposal, this is not anything we have agreed to. Three fifty, going up four fifty, five fifty, six fifty, seven fifty, and then a five-year lease turn at four hundred a month for the first three years, and then fourteen seventy. This, like I said, this is his suggestion, nothing we have agreed to, it literally just came across our desk yesterday. So, I thought it was really, it's a positive, and we'll just have to talk amongst ourselves and decide what we want to do, or bring it to the next board meeting, or, literally brought it up. So, anything else?
Yeah, so for the rent increases, we did a one percent increase instead of three percent for long-term tenants, and I moved forward, and I think that'd be a good idea, we had a lot of pushback this year with signing leases, but all the tenants have been here for a while, so I'm thinking with the middle-aged ones, we just keep that three percent, but with tenants that have been here for two years plus, we'll do that.
And it was very, I think we've talked about this previously, that a three percent increase was actually quite a lot, and one percent was more closer to like staying in the living, and where we are, it just seemed, it seemed like a lot if we gave it a three percent.
And then, for two years, if you could cut up?
Yeah, so I did one-year leases right now, because I did the one percent increase, just kind of making sense with the numbers, but we decided to get the tenant for five years, we'll try to work around that as they come. But everyone's been here for a while that's here, so they are like, "Okay, well, it's back on the stuff." So, we want to make it fair, we want to make sure that we keep working. And then, with site unlimited, they were working on building one today, and they were kind of finishing up, they did repair the large window and the spa, so we decided that, "You know what, go ahead," so we don't have any trouble, all windows are new, yes.
Three options, they gave her three options, and she went with the easiest one, which was just do it now, and then she would have to pay for it herself when the process is done, and if it leaks, she would have to pay for it, and she said, "Okay, fine."
Yes.
So, I was very happy.
So, the next phase is we want to build a three, which is, you know, this building to work on the windows, but they will be finishing up final touches in all the buildings first, so that'll be coming up like the next month, and we'll go on to the next part. All righty, and then the gazebo, we will just look in the springtime for that.
So, just keep looking, so. Yeah, I'll, I'll, as mine would.
And I can follow up with the industry or instrument, too, since they put some there.
Yeah, I actually, I'm front and front. Oh, okay. It's next, please.
Oh, thank you. And then, for the snow removal contract, we put that made up four weeks ago, today was the deadline, and the asphalt contractors responded, that was only for.
Okay, I'm there, I put it out in the chat.
And we'll talk about that a little further.
Perfect.
So, that's for court.
All right, treasures report. In your pocket, you'll see a white green paper, and that is the direct deposit form if you choose to want to do that. Feel free to send that, fill it out, go back to the next board meeting, or drop it off at the office, up to you, it is optional.
Are there fees associated to the village for this, or is it all?
They just wrapped up in the high trees, we already gave them the books. So, yes, we are paying for it, not additionally. Anything else, Kendall? Okay. So, moving on, old business, let's have a short discussion about our new doors and lock quote, it was higher than previous quarter than this frame. Lateria, you've got all paperwork, so I'm just going to explain.
Yeah, so initially, Kurt was working on a project, so we got a quote, we said that's good to go, but then, when it was time to start moving on it, they did do two doors, they put two doors on building five, they have not put the electronic locks on there, there's a temporary key on there, just so they can install that portion of it, but then, I got a call saying, "Oh, no, we didn't give you the entire quote, like, that quote doesn't have the electronic locks." So, it went up like two more thousand dollars, and then, after that, I got another call saying, "Oh, goodness, we didn't put the labor on there," so it went up like three more thousand.
So, he's like, "Stop." Well, you're not happy about this, I'm not happy about it.
It escalated, and it's over to five thousand more. Before, it was like four thousand, and that's when we were. Before it was like four thousand and that's when we were going to go.
So, I'm very, because that goes into the problems, it goes over to five thousand more.
Yeah, we'll have to decide, we'll be together.
Until you guys decide, um, so what is the, do we have a copy of it?
Yeah, um, I'll just pass it over.
So take a load, support. We have all the doors. They are residential doors. Well, Terrianna is not very happy with those, so she doesn't like to look at that. Um, I know that the electronic locks, as we talked with Kurt, um, I think the electronic locks would be great. And we do have a lot of problems with keys around here, right? We play rooms, I do not have a key at building five right now, but I can't, never get in there unless they're over there. So, I guess I, I don't know. I'd like your ideas or suggestions about how to handle this.
Escalated and I have something down. And I have three more of escalation prices over here, so I'll pass that. So I didn't know if we should just like start looking again, just to kinda see what our options are?
I mean, I know they're a little old company in town, they've been a company in business forever, but this is shady. It is a little shady and I feel like because Kurt was working on it, it was great, and then it's like Kurt's not here and now they're giving us all sorts of like just runaround and I just don't, oh my God. So part of me is like, um, we could just go to a totally different company or start looking to see what else is out there, um...
Is it just the locks meeting, the doors are installed?
No, they're not installed yet. We only, we have two doors installed, the rest are in the garage.
And those are paid for and installation's paid for, so we're just talking about the locks.
Yes, that's correct.
And we just get those on Amazon. Or we have the back that can install.
I was gonna say, is this something that the, in way, the... There is, but I could ask him. I mean, yeah.
So we have the doors in the residential, so they, they added the upcharge as well to put the doors in the frame, um, on off doors, too. So there's an upcharge for that. So there are residential doors, there was a residential facility that's full cameras. So, um, I don't think it would hurt to get other locks, so I think we should, four locks would be almost ten thousand dollars for...
I think it's, it does not agree aesthetically with another...
Did they give you the storm doors that kept off building five?
No.
Because those were expensive doors that were put on building five, the storm doors.
And I think...
To put residential doors on the building, commercial building.
Yeah, I like the door.
I know, I...
So I'll look into that, um, if we didn't get the locks back either, so...
And we're not sure if they're doors, like Kurt was like, I really like these ones, so we were going with, with this and I don't know who made it, uh, who's saying, don't, don't share that before, 'cause I love her dearly and I love her dearly, but I, I just don't know, um, and I, I don't know.
Have Terry looked at it, he knows.
It is just such an escalation, I'm like, labor's not... And then he's like, oh, let me check and see taxes, I'm like, too, are you saying...
Like, it's a very, it's very...
And you don't worry about any company and they're like, oh, we add it on top, on top, on top, that's not any...
Yeah.
I mean, I was like, I, I make it seem maybe we're obviously passing a move, you don't know how do I have quotes, we don't do it right, so I think that's myself, sometimes it happens, but...
It keeps happening. But the company has to take a certain level of control here as well, and this is just, you know, this is a, I mean, it's a challenge, this isn't just a, you know... Well, I, I, I think we will stop where we are, we will not go forward with this. Um, we will, I will ask Terry if he can take a look at this and get any feedback from him. And then, um, and we might have another decision to make at the next board meeting. So I'd like to just kinda table it, not do anything, we're not gonna go forward with this though.
So the work that's been done so far, there's nothing like halfway done or anything, it's like, it's just, like, we're not leaving something that's here.
No, all the doors have locks and everything is fine. Um, she's just mentioned, we don't really like the toilets, they just look...
Yeah.
They, she...
They, I'm sure that's very...
And the ones in the, if you look at the spa, there's three windows and they just look nice, these ones have one window, she's like, it looks like a jail cell, like, I just don't care for it. And I kind of agree that it's not...
So it looks like a back door.
Yeah. It just doesn't...
Not even like a back door, actually.
Like, both the doors are covered, it's gonna be like...
It just doesn't, I don't know. Like, I, I don't know. So look at building five, that's what our new doors are, I don't think we can return our doors now, so I think we're stuck with them. Um, but we, we did not take the storms off of the other doors. All the other doors still have storms, and I agree that I don't really wanna get rid of the storms and the little...
Yeah.
That just seems like a silly move to me that we would take off those storm doors, because people do, the spotlight leaves her door open. And if you don't have a storm door, you can never leave your door open, so...
And we leave the door open too, and we are open for open doors and like...
So I think we just have to make sure they cannot remove the storm doors from anything else, okay?
So how much money can we owe them right now? I haven't confirmed, they owe the two doors on already?
When they put the temporary lock on, so that's...
Siding unlimited, yeah, and that's where we got the doors from, right? Yes. Okay.
If you're gonna upgrade though, I don't know why they couldn't take it back and you just pay a little bit more for better doors.
Okay, so we could maybe ask siding unlimited, um, I'm just not, I mean, what do you think? Are you...
I don't love them, I also have not cared too much, but...
Okay, I will, I might, maybe we call siding unlimited, just say, you know, we thought differently, because they're, we're not really liking the way these look. Do you have anything else we can look at? Um, let me, let me find out. Okay. Oh, material, okay. Um, all right, so new business. Is there anything else? I don't really have to make a look, no. Okay, we're just moving on, because there's nothing to say. So, um, discussion and possible approval on new appointed trustee to fill vacancies. So, there has not been anybody coming forth with the exception of Lou Barrios, who is on our board of the board, who said he would throw his hat in the ring if you would like to, if you would like to join, um, the board again, if there was an open seat, he would put his name forth. Um, as we know Kurt has passed away, I did call Laura and ask if she would like to come back to the board, um, and gave her time to see what she thought and she did accept that she would like to come back to the board. I felt like it would offer her some stability in this time, um, we're going to, what do you say, um, get rid of her resignation, like, she's gonna deact, like, what's the word I'm looking for, I'm an English teacher, like, take it back, she's taking back her resignation and she...
Rescind, thank you.
Yes, she said, thank you. Um, she's gonna rescind her resignation and she is going to be, um, coming back to the board. Um, I did tell her that she would not have to come to today's meeting, she could start in October. Um, Lou and I, actually Laura, I think called Lou, because she felt like that one was definitely on its toes, and I said, you're not sitting in it, so nobody's really paying for it, Lou is doing it just as a favor. Um, and I did tell Lou, you know, if there's no open seat in April, you know, think about if like, to, I don't know, if anybody decides not to come back. So Laura's, Laura's seat would be through April and then she would have to run again, just like I would have to run again, I think, or, so, Europe, yeah, anymore on the same. Um, so Laura's coming back and I'm really happy for that and I think it's really good and Laura knows how much I appreciate her institutional knowledge of this place and she's also eyes and ears for the village and she gives us a lot of feedback when I'm not noticing things and I really appreciate that. So, with that being said, um, I would like to move forth with a possible approval of our new appointed trustee to fill the vacancy, do you agree? Can I have a first?
I made the motion to put Laura's picture into the board.
First by ready, second by Stevie. Um, any other discussion? All with finger? A vote? You guys have it, so fast. Is that all you wanted to ask me? Yep, talked to her this week. It's been, I wanted to give her some stakes before, um, so yes, she is coming back and I just, um, and I think we're all a little thrilled. Losing Kurt is hard and losing Laura as well is really been hard, so, that's great. Um, okay, next, a discussion and possible vote for fence variance at thirty-three, thirty-five standing lane, which is brought to us by, um, Patricia Black, so Pat, would you like to share, talk, do you wanna tell us anything, because I know you're on the agenda, I'd just like for you to share with the board.
Okay, I wanted to make a comment to people who are on the board, and I'm almost, I'm listening to you, almost thinking I wanna do that.
Can you speak up also, ma'am, too?
I'm sorry.
You can't hardly hear you, you're very...
I, I wanted to make a, a comment to each of you on the board. I've been on your side and the only contentious meeting I was ever at on the board was fences. And so I figured when you saw that, I know you were gonna go, oh my gosh, because I heard word hitting around people's mouths I've never heard before since I was disappointed. So I just want you to know, I appreciate where you're at. I almost wanted to leave this for after you made a decision, but I know where you're coming from is hard, it's hard, so thank you for what you do, I'm not gonna be contentious regardless of what you decide.
Thank you, ma'am, go ahead. Do you want to tell us about your fence issue? Because I need to know more as well, than they need to hear.
My son-in-law has taken a job, uh, which requires him to leave immediately, he will leave on October first, my daughter will stay here until at least the end of January to finish her, um, semester of teaching, and they have three dogs. They have a, and they have to sell their house because it's nineteen hundred miles away. And, uh, so they have a terrier, a schnauzer, and a Great Dane. And so, um, they, obviously they wanna sell their houses, the house before they go, you know, almost two thousand miles, and I'm the game in town, so, uh, but dogs and my daughter will be staying with me during that time, and I'm trying to figure out what do I do with these dogs that is feasible? So, there you go.
And you want to put in the four-foot fence you don't feel is big enough? I mean, I know the Great Dane, but Great Dane typically...
Well, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a, an aesthetic problem in that fence that is behind half of my yard is a six-foot. Um, but I mean, I, I just was thinking that would be better to go with that, and I actually had forgotten that the regulation is four.
Right, so it's a regulation of four with a, you know, I have a four-foot fence, but, sorry, Tom, it really does need to be replaced and I say it all the time, but like, I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna deal with it. We have a picket fence, we have two dogs, and we have a picket fence, and we do have a, a bigger fence in the back, because that was in when we moved in, but my dogs, obviously my dog gets out once in a while, so the fence has loose boards, but it doesn't hop the fence. Um, Pat, when you, are you thinking of just having, you and I had talked a little bit and you had thought about, if you put this fence in, it would only be until your kids or your daughter was living with you and then you would take it down, or you're planning on keeping it?
Good one. I think it'd be pretty expensive to put it up and take it down again. I mean, I, I, yeah, and...
What a four-foot fence, like, first of all, it has to go with planning commission anyways, and I don't know if the planning commission would actually approve a six-foot fence. I, I'm pretty proud to tell you, it probably won't.
Well, and so the six-foot that's behind me that I sort of inherited, because it goes through half my backyard, which is wider, um, is because of the swimming pool?
I don't know.
Well, you know, it just all of a sudden showed up there one day. That would be the only reason I would say six feet as opposed to four, because of the, you know, I mean, I realized after a while, that Great Dane is not going to jump a four-foot fence.
No.
So, I mean, four is fine, except I've got one six-foot...
Could you use the six-foot fence and just put in a four-foot fence connected to it? And use their half of the fence, do you see what I'm saying? Because that's what I have in my backyard right now, we have a six-foot fence because it was there when we moved in, and we have a picket fence that's four feet. So we don't have to have another fence, which I don't know if we really need another fence, although it might, I mean, it's just a thought.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just counting to you because I figure, you know, I may as well run it up the flight pole and see if it flies, because I, I don't know what to do with three dogs, but, you know, that's my problem, I'm figuring this is one solution.
The board would approve a four-foot fence with see-through with, you know, I think it's picket, picket fence, like fifty percent see-through, um, but if you're asking for a six-foot fence, you have, we have to bring it to the planning commission. And I, I don't think, we've already talked to one resident and they, um, they wanted the six-foot fence just a while, well, it was Reverend Harrow, Pastor Harrow, um, and we said no. But we said if you brought us the plans, well, we would do plans, we need to see actually what you're putting in and you need a permit, so just know that that's the other part, is you need to, to get a permit for the fence and you need to show what kind of fence you're putting in, um, candles or anything, I'm forgetting.
Uh, yeah, the permit is, if it's following the ordinances, and you don't need to go through the board.
Right. So if you decide to get a four-foot fence with a fifty percent see-through, um, then you just need a permit and you just have to show the plans of like to make sure it fits the very, or the ordinance. If you don't wanna go with the ordinance, then we need, you need to bring actual plans back to a board meeting and show us what you're putting in.
Okay, so, the picture that I sent is a, is a stockade because that's what was behind, what is behind me already, that's what I inherited. So what you're saying is a stockade is unlikely to pass by the...
Right.
Which, which makes sense, I mean, I hate to say that, but I'm sorry, so...
Yeah, you were on the board.
Well, I mean, I have, you know, but a picket would mean quite a space in between.
And that's what I have in my...
Issues, but I would say a picket is more than fifty percent, isn't it?
Um, well, it's just, a picket fence would be fine, that's what Kendall has in her yard too, and she has not only one dog, but she has a police dog as well, and there's, I mean, that German Shepherd is, I mean, I'm sure he's also a little bit tied up, yes, no? Yeah, and he, we've never...
Don't go over on the fence.
No. People don't go near fence. People wouldn't go near it. So, that's, that's what I would say, if you could ask your neighbor if you could use the stockade fence and then just build around it with a picket fence, um, but I guarantee nobody is gonna approve, I don't know, or, what do you wanna say?
I mean, the only thing I can think is if, that, and I don't think it's a privilege either, but if it's, if I'm looking at this right, where the drawing that you have here, where the, the swivel mark here, is that where the six-foot already is existing?
Yes, it's already there.
The only thing I can think of, maybe you could try the next corner, on the visual area, visual, whatever, is just to, you know, maybe extend like a six-foot on that one side and then have the picket fence on the other two sides.
Okay.
So you'd have like...
Six-foot on one side and two, and four feet on the other, or are you saying...
Like, just so it's... Just so it would continue the fence, so you'd have the same...
Because it's not big enough, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I don't know if they would approve that, but I, I mean, that kinda makes sense to...
I think aesthetically, it would make sense having your stockade fence across the back of your dog year and then coming up towards your house at a four-foot, um, but...
Will they approve that? I don't...
Yeah.
We, we have to send it still to the planning commission, Pat, um, to see what they say, because you, yes, because it doesn't go all the way across your backyard, it's just partial.
Yeah, it's, it's weird.
So you can't really do, okay, I was thinking it was going all the way across.
Well, no, I would put it all the way across.
Right.
What's on there is what's... That's already there, it's halfway in my yard and quits.
Yeah, yeah, who was me, that's what I would ask.
Because my, my property is half of each of my neighbors, it's just strange, it's offset.
So I would, that's what I would ask the, would you like us, you would have to bring the lands, we'd have to ask the planning commission to see if they would approve it. I would include in that, um, why you're putting in the fence. Um, I would also wonder, I got, like, because you already have the fence in the back, which I know was not done correctly, that was a long time ago, but I know it was done, um...
Before, we were both on the board.
Yes. So I think, um, you could bring it to them and it would go to them. So I think you could bring it to them and it would go to them.
Okay. One other question. The terrier is a small dog and is able to get through. I mean, it depends on how close those pickets are because they've had... My daughter and son-in-law had to do something to their fence on the bottom. She's not tall, but she's...
Little.
She's tiny.
Right.
And I don't know. I'd have to see if she could get through a picket fence. But anyway, that is... That would be your parameters. And what I would do is bring it to you first for approval. And then it would go to the planning commission. Is that correct?
Is that correct? I believe so. I think so. I think it could because we've already talked about it. Probably could move right to the planning commission. Because you have like kind of a... I think that's what I would do. Bring it to the office.
Okay.
We will bring it to the planning commission. We have already discussed it.
All right.
And then if they approve it, then it comes back to the board and we move it over.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
As you know, I mean, my problem is I've been on your side and I know how hard this was.
Yes.
We all hate to see it in the event that, you know, so yeah, I'll... Whatever you think is best. And I'll see if I can find one that will be suitable for animals that's small.
Okay.
As open order.
So yeah, just because I'm curious now. Does it have to be a four-inch or could it be like two, 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 so that you're... As long as it's fifty percent?
Or this is still could be a two, like a two or three-inch piece of wood and then a three-inch gap? Like a three, three? Because that would be the same. Do the same thing with Rod on here. One of my neighbors has a Rod on here fence and it's beautiful and it's very tight.
That's what my kids have. But that dog could get through it. So in other words, it has to be three inches thick.
It just has to be fifty-fifty.
It just has to be fifty-fifty, so it doesn't matter. It just has to equal.
But it does have to have some over it.
Yep.
It can't be... Cannot be cycloned or...
You don't want a chain link. Please don't do that. You don't want me to put a chain link fence up.
No. Okay. So Pat, I would bring any information you have to the office. We'll get to the planning commission. They'll talk about it and then it'll come back to us. But I would include maybe a letter or something explaining your part, just so they're aware. And also explaining that behind your house, make sure you make it clear that it's only a partial fence behind your house that it's six-foot, which is why you need to... They need to make it clear.
Aesthetically, it would be nice to finish it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I don't think we need... We can't prove anything, so there's no vote. So I'm just going to move on and ask Pat to bring that to the office. Okay. A discussion of possible approval building for number five. Building number five, kitchen update. I don't have any approval. I don't have all of that done yet. It's been hard to get into building five because I don't have a key because I'm limited as it. And Terry literally just started it up two weeks ago. And he is going to be the person that I want to look at this project. We took our alone to help build, make a couple of things. And the one thing that building five asked for was can we get some updates on these cabinets? They are in poor condition. They have been painted. Some of the cabinet doors are gone. They look terrible. They do use that kitchen a lot. I'm looking for something at Menards. Actually, Terry was looking at something else that we could possibly do. He can hang the cabinets. But even the... I'm worried because the countertop in there is bowed and coming up. There's a pipe coming from the sink, goes up, goes out, it goes back down to the basement. And I just feel like it's gonna be a drainage problem down the way, so I wanted Terry to look at that. There's lighting under there. I wanted Terry to make sure we're not messing anything up if we take these cabinets out. There's like a... Oh, I can't think of it. It's metal. And it has all the wires that go onto it. Thank you. My brain. So there... I don't have a decision, but I am like the first quote I got was about five thousand dollars from Menards. So I have a feeling we're going to have to... It was four thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars. And that was with the cabinets and the countertop. And it looked really good. They did not ask for all of the cabinets to be replaced. They asked for partial cabinets to be replaced. I was trying to build something that was similar with removing a couple of them. But then when it comes down to... I just... I had to hold off on it. I couldn't... I couldn't move forward with this until I really got somebody else's eyes on it. I'm building my father-in-law's kitchen right now and this was just very nerve-wracking to me to go ahead and say, yeah, do it, when I wanted another person and that other person is here. So there's really not a vote to be had.
Well, and I'm wondering how kind of looking at this huge shot field that keeps going up that... And I know we took a loan and I know we took a little bit of a cushion in case any, you know, thing went over the price. If Lou and Kendall and I get together and discuss this, we look at what that exactly is. So that we're not just like spending this small...
That's why I'm like, I just stopped. I'm like, okay. I told them, I'm like, I am looking at this seriously, but I am not ready to push the go button. And it might not be a push the go button even if it's under five thousand dollars. I may come back to the board in October to say, okay, this is the plan. This is what I'm thinking. They did not... When you go in that kitchen, it's like a big U and they have cabinets below and they have cabinets at top. And for a second, they just wanted one set, but I was looking at it going, there's no... This would make no sense to just do part of it and not do the whole thing. Menards did tell me like the cabinets we're looking at are not industrial, but they are just really strong cabinets. But they're not like beautiful cherry or anything. They're just white basic cabinets.
Big ones, big part?
Um, that's something I could ask them.
How long has it been since?
Uh, two years.
So two more years?
They have done a lot of improvements on that building themselves.
How long?
Yeah, July.
Yeah, and that was immediate. They said, can we do some of the cabinet? And the pastor expressed, this is like the heart of the church. We serve breakfast on Sundays. Like the women are in that kitchen.
And it is just a really poor... I don't know if you've seen it. Here, I'll show you a picture.
I'm just curious if they're willing to pay for it and if they will help?
Um, or up to a certain amount, kind of a...
Yeah.
Yeah.
That can also stop if you have a tab for me. I'd be pleased if that's not...
The hardest part of the habitat will be that when you go into habitat, you have to find something that really fits that space. And...
There's no...
There's not. So let me see if this is all of them. Okay. So if you scroll this way...
There's nothing that's cheap.
Not even like...
Yeah. Really not. I mean, consider getting used to it, but still spending it. Fifty, whatever.
So it's probably... It's gonna be pushed probably until October and I just did not feel comfortable going forward. So is there anything else that you guys want me to look at?
I don't know.
Um, I may have an idea, but we'll talk... Okay. We'll talk. Anything else?
I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind.
You can and really not supposed to, but I'll let you this time.
Thank you. I've had many, many properties and when I was working here for the village, a lot of the improvements that wanted to be done were done by the tenant.
Right.
I understand you have long-term tenants and it's a new tenant that is in building five now, correct?
Well, let me just put it this way. They have made a lot of improvements. This is the only one they asked us to do. And in their...
I understand their defense, but another approach that has worked...
Yeah, go ahead.
Is if that's gonna be the case, if they have a long-term lease, why don't we do fifty-fifty on it and we'll help you instead of covering the whole cost? You get your bid and you consider it fifty-fifty because it's benefiting both of you and they're getting their half out by using the term their space in the lease.
Yeah. So let me... That's a really great idea and I think you just kind of said that. And I have not even given them plans. I didn't really show them. I just said, please be patient because this is something that's not gonna happen overnight. I can't just spend village money and say, yes, we're doing this. So...
Another avenue to look at is Hobo for their cabinet.
Oh, yeah. Is Hobo still around over here?
No. They're in Milwaukee. They're in Layton and...
I forgot about Hobo. Okay. Thank you, Tom. I really didn't ask us to talk, but thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. Um, the next... So nothing to approve. We're just gonna move on. Table that until probably October. And hopefully I'll have more of some suggestions or things we can look at and see if you want me to do. Um, discussion about plumbing and building inspector pay and fees. So the plumbing inspector came to us and Kendall, I'm gonna let you talk a little bit because you know more. Go ahead.
The way that our permit forms are laid out, there's some minimums, there's some maximums when it comes to the fees for our inspectors. And the plumbing inspector pointed out that the way that turns out for them, sometimes a project will require two, maybe three inspections because they have to come when they do the initial work and then in the middle of work and the end to give the final inspection to make sure that actual work is being done the right way. He says, by the time I've come out to do the whole project, now I'm making fifteen dollars every trip I come out here because of the minimum fee that they get. So he wanted to possibly give us representation. I said, I don't want that. I would like to negotiate with you. I would like to figure out, you know, what are the going rates for other inspectors in the area? Obviously, you're not gonna wanna go outside your home and go drive to someone's house for fifteen dollars each time. That's just not enough money for your time. I did look around at different forms. In the process of doing this, I actually had the building inspector come in my office the other day and he overheard me on the phone. He's like, you know, I've been meaning to talk to you. I'm like, oh, no. He's like, you know, a lot of these aren't worth my time either. And I'm like, oh, God. And so, you know, on our building form, we have a minimum, a maximum fee. The maximum fee is a hundred and forty for our building inspector. Plus, there's a seventy-dollar week plan review if it's a larger project where they have to review the engineering plans. And so that's the most amount of money that a building inspector can make on a building permit. We just got a large project permit on Monday, sixty-five thousand dollar project of an addition. And he was in the office. We were able to talk about it and he's like, I'll have to go there at least five times. I'm like, whoa. Like, I didn't know that. And so my idea, after looking at things, I spoke with clerk of North Bay as well, kinda got what they do. It's gotta have like a blank permit form with no prices on it. We obviously have standard Wisconsin fee schedule. It's updated every year on the basic fees for sewer repair, building drain, building lateral. So it has like a standard fee that we can follow. But I think that I should talk with the inspectors individually on each permit and say, how many inspections is this going to take? And it's a per-inspection fee. And so for our plumbing inspector, he doesn't wanna work for us unless he gets at least seventy-five dollars every time he has to come out to the resident's house. The other side note to this is that as I was talking with Dory from North Bay, we were talking about the profit that a municipality makes on permits. And a lot of the bigger municipalities choose not to make a profit on permits. They make a basic administration fee, like twenty-five dollars a day. Just to kind of, you know, the time the clerk takes to do the permits, to keep payroll, you know, things going. I told her that we do five percent of the cost of the project and she like just wasn't like... That's the highest she's ever heard of in for profit on a municipality. So we also have min-maximums on our profit as well on that fee. And so we can make a minimum of fifty on a permit if it's a small project or we can make a maximum of a hundred on a small project. And I'm looking at the plumbing permit right now as I'm talking. But I talked to Chris. He says, you know, that's a way for the municipality to make money. But again, Dory said there's a middle ground there. Do you wanna promote an environment in your village where people will take out a permit without trying to secretly do a project and not take out a permit? Because they don't like the cost of it? Or do you wanna promote where they're like, oh, it's not that expensive. Yes, I'll do it. I'd rather do that than be fine double by not taking it out. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that before the board, before I made any major like changes. Do you know how much we made in permits last year? Was it... I'm not even sure you remember the number off the top of your head, but I'm just curious. Like, how much money would we lose if we took that off? Okay. So we brought in... Just let's look at building for this year. We've had twenty-two hundred come in. That's not profit, just a minute. And paid out... I'm sorry, I need this. Twelve hundred plus twenty-two hundred plus twenty-two hundred is forty-four plus twelve is six and fifty-two hundred. We've come in income and we've paid out thirty-four. So like in payroll. Darn. So we're making a couple thousand dollars. Is a couple thousand dollars in the grand scheme of our budget worth it towards our residents? Like twenty thousand dollars? No. I'm just checking. I, um... So I don't...
I have a question. So for the inspections, like a plumbing inspection, the inspector that actually does the work and looks at it, doesn't he negotiate a price with the person doing the project?
No.
How are we involved in that?
They come to our office and they pull the permit form.
The permit, yeah.
They fill it out. They write what they're doing, what their project is, the cost, estimated cost. We gather their insurance and contractor's licenses and then they pay us. They pay us the minimum or the maximum and then five percent of the projected estimated cost. And then I contact the inspector and tell him he has a new permit. And then I pay them and they go out and they take care of it.
So are they talking about the number of hookups that he has to have, Kendall? Because that a plumbing inspector or any inspector, plumbing inspector especially, knows the amount of hookups that they have to have to meet the code if they go out and they're bidding the job. When he's out looking at the job, they know how many hookups they have to have and what's gonna require them. I gotta come back after you do this part. They know that right off the bat.
So we... Okay. So the homeowner wants something done, do they come to us first or do they get bids first and so on?
Well, they get the contractor ready to go.
So they get all that figured out?
They're ready to start work. And then so usually it's the contractor that'll come and hold the permit. Sometimes it's the resident. It should be the contractor.
They'll pull a permit and then before it's a go, the plumbing inspector has to come out and say, yes, this is done properly. Right?
Before it's final inspection. They do have the final inspection. Sometimes they have to do a rough inspection before he's finished because if they close all the walls, they won't be able to see the rest. So that's why there'd have to be multiple visits to the home.
I understand.
Who determines how many visits are made? Is that made...
That would be by the inspector because I wouldn't know.
So he could say, yeah, I gotta come out there seven times. I could come out there eight times.
Now, he did send me a little chicken scratch here. And I say, can you give me an estimate of what each of these would be?
I think there needs to be kind of...
But a bigger project, he said, five.
That was our building, building inspector. Plumbing inspector said about one to two average, depending on what's being done.
Okay. So, and he wants to go over these?
Seventy-five minimum.
I mean, and right now it's seventy.
Isn't that the responsibility of the person doing the?
Sorry, what?
Isn't that the responsibility of the person who's doing the project, that owns the house?
Yes.
Yes, they're not, the residents can be paying that.
We're just saying, like, if you are redoing your bathroom right now, which you actually are redoing your bathroom right now, you would have to pay for the inspector to come out. He wants to go from seventy to seventy-five.
That's up to me then?
Correct. We're not paying it as a village.
That's right.
The residents pay.
And that's my confusion.
So can he ask for what he wants?
No, he's not a contractor. He works for us. And so we pay him his fee.
So we set the fee?
Correct. The resident pays us, we pay them.
I feel like maybe with the inspector, if there's some sort of like schedule, where like a toilet inspection is, you know, a new toilet or a plumbing is kind of, so it's not a, well, this could be this, and this could be this. I mean, there might be some negotiation on what's the project going to be. Like, especially with, you know, sixty-five thousand dollar addition. There could be all kinds of things that sort of pop up. But it feels, I mean, we're not, not that big. We don't have that many projects going now. There's not going to be that much variation of what's going on. So I feel like a chart kind of, especially, you know, of. That's a kind of start from, and maybe, I don't know if the inspector has something like that.
We do have that, and we currently have that.
Oh, okay.
I mean, our form lists the different things that someone has to do.
Okay, that's what I'm, okay. So then it's, because like, there's like chicken scratches and this and that. Is that all part of?
That was just his notes to me. I asked him to send you some notes.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering. Is like, if that's, like, so these are, I guess.
Not gonna say, like, you did mention between seventy-five and a hundred and forty.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm getting these confused, because we have different forms for building and different forms for plumbing.
Okay, so the building inspector might be higher. Plumbing inspector is basically seventy-five. Building inspector could be, could vary depending on how many inspections.
Both of them want to vary depending on how many inspections a project may require.
Okay, so we're just deciding as of now if we want to allow them.
I don't think you guys need to decide, vote on it necessarily. Because I did look at the ordinance, and Chris had, Chris said you guys have changed the ordinance to say that the inspection fees are set by our inspectors. It used to be a list in the ordinance of how much things cost, and then all that got lined out, and then the replaced paragraph saying all fees are negotiated with the.
That's actually, I would rather they don't quit. And I think it's fine if the plumbing inspector needs to go up, it's only by five dollars.
Right, but I would also have to make it so that there's a per.
Per.
Per inspection.
Yes.
Right. So, and then there's got a box where it says, how many inspections will this project take? And I think it's going to have to be something that's manual that I do.
Yeah.
Not something they can just fill out and email.
That's what I was trying to come up with, like, something where it wouldn't have to be a manual thing.
There's just no way it's, especially that sixty-five thousand dollar project that came in on Monday. I would have never known that.
Where is that?
Are you selling that? It's an addition.
Yeah, I know, just a little look.
So, I did take it upon myself with perk to figure out how many inspections that project was going to take because it's large. And we talked to the contractor at Cheltenham Road and told him that it's going to take five inspections. And we did seventy times five. So he would get seventy dollars every time from team over here from Paladonia to do an inspection. And they agreed to it. So they sent us quite a long amount of additional money.
Is that still per chocolate?
Yes.
Right? I'm, not that we have to vote, but I think it's a go. Yes?
The only thing you guys would have to decide is next meeting if you would want to look at changing the amount of money the village needs, because that is in the ordinance. So right now it's five percent of projected cost of the project.
I meant, do we take that out? I think, I mean, I know, I know Dory Pendover well, North Bay, I used to work with her. Don't figure, I know her. I think that if we look at other municipalities and we're like way over the vote on that, we're a very small village, that's not fair.
I mean, I would probably recommend what they're doing. They're doing a twenty-five dollar administrative fee or the five percent of something, whatever it's greater or lesser or something. I could look at it again, yeah.
Just to cover the costs, basically.
It's, yeah, my time, my time to facilitate this, to pay for that, and a little bit, a tiny bit of income, paperwork. And, yeah, stamps if I have to mail stuff.
So we have to maybe know that we might have to add that to the actual agenda to change the ordinance. Okay, okay, that I'm moving on. Okay, and Kendall, you're up again, but, well, thank you ultimately. The recommended budget for future roads project. We did, Latiria and I met with Greg from before to get the ball rolling on the phase two of the roads project for next spring. And then we did get something from Eellers, letting us know. Because what would you like to say? Kendall, would you like to say anything?
I actually did not really copy my email from my cell phone, but we can have it in front of you from Mr. His name.
Greg?
Right, yeah. There it is. What is G O?
Attaches.
General obligation.
General obligation debt capacity project. Based on existing debt outstanding and a two percent growth in annual value, village needs to preserve borrowing capacity for any unforeseen needs or emergencies. The village should leave twenty-five percent of its borrowing capacity at minimum. The village borrowed one point five million. Village should be at seventy-five percent of its debt. This is not a recommendation to borrow one point five million. We recommend the village develop a multi-year capital plan so village can plan its financing needs accordingly. Without the village's own risk or borrowing capability, it's really a handle future capital needs that may come up. When Latiria and I met with Greg, I want to say it was the end of July or beginning of August. Yeah, beginning of August. We did talk about what roads, like, in the plans when we did the first phase. It looked like some parts were done, and actually they weren't done. And so like Sandish Lane, actually right by Kendall's house, and the Austria House, right at the stop sign. It looks like that was finished. It was never completed. They actually stopped before they got to Sandish. So that's something we have to add. I also wanted them to look at, we had a lane because that is a bad street. So we were thinking about shifting a couple of things, but it really, like, Laser Avenue, we have no control. That is not, that is county matter. We are possibly having that done next year. The county will be doing that. So I told them, you know, if we can, if they do do that road, it would be great if we were also doing our road. So we've got to make some decisions. I don't, I don't think we really have to approve anything. We're not, I just wanted you to look at it and see. We're in the very early stages of this. I have a feeling they'll come into a presentation at some point. Yes. Either, Ellers or the poor. When we first did the. Well, when we first did the road project, they did come in and talk to us a couple times. And that did help understand how much we were going to do. We have not borrowed any of this though, Kendall, right? Like, we have not borrowed anything?
No.
Do we have any idea how much it's going to cost?
No, not yet. We haven't got that far yet.
So it's very early stages.
I mean, I guess it's one of those where when the road people come in, we'll have to have them maybe present us with a couple of different options. If we have to maybe, I know, like, we all want to get it done and just done. But if we have to split it in two, we have to split it in two.
Well, and it's really a three-phase. Is it a four-phase?
It's a four-phase, but, yeah, that's, so I, so we just, I guess, maybe when they come in, they're just prepared to like.
We can also say that, once you, once you take out that. Well, Latiria is working on that right now. She is working on a grant for, she's working with the league and trying to find grants. We do have some money coming back just for the first, for, right?
It was eighteen K.
Yeah, so we do have some money coming back for the first.
Think you still opened up another grant?
She's running on it right now. We're on it. So if you take out, let's say you take out one point five million for the next road project, just be, just notice that the next time any type of debt falls off, our debt is twenty thirty-one. Right? So you would have to wait an additional six years before you even think about doing a smaller project, because that's only a three hundred thousand dollar note that's falling off in twenty thirty-one. So we're going to be kind of stuck for a decade without being able to borrow more.
And so, yeah, so it makes me, because there's.
What about the loan that's coming off?
Yes, it's the other thing we have.
That, this is including that falling off.
Okay.
That's after that falls off, this is what we have.
Because these buildings are.
Because what?
These buildings are all, like.
Next year they'll be paid off.
Will be paid off.
Yeah.
So you're saying even if they're.
That's how much we recommend we don't take more out than that.
Than, okay.
Than that, yeah.
And I'm never planning.
It's a lot of money.
I'm never planning on taking out as much as you can possibly take.
No.
That's just a horrible idea.
Would it be helpful for the board to hear from, I guess, the poor would be who we would start with? Would you like them to present? Would you like, I mean, he gave us basically a whole schedule of the way things go. And we do have to put out some bids at some point to see who will do the project.
I personally, I don't think it necessarily has to be a whole board presentation, but the money part of it, just to see what the options. Because it's kind of getting a pre-approval for a house, like, how much do we really have? Even before we start, you know, getting our, all the oogly-googly and half million out of house. You know, what we're going to look for, three hundred thousand out of house. Like, okay, let's be realistic about this.
Okay. It's possible, like, just having.
Even just, I mean.
Eellers coming in.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if everybody wants to hear it.
I think it's helpful. That's what we did the first time we did the roads, and I, I do feel like it gave us some clarity. I certainly, it stresses me out.
You know, one of those things, and then there's lots of other peers that hear the same thing and they pick up on stuff. So I think it's just not bad. And then it's easier to explain to the residents when you guys ask us about it.
Why is this?
We know what happened.
Yeah, okay. All right, Kendall, is there anything else that you have to say? It is in the beginning stages. He was, Greg was great. Actually, one thing that was done when Greg came in, I talked to him, because if you live on South Elmwood or East Elmwood, there were seven grates that still had mesh in them from the first road project. And I said, our maintenance guys can't get this out. They can't lift these. He went and took out seven, seven things of mesh in seven different groups. I mean, it's all, you could see the leaves are just piling up, and I'm like, why is this not? So that's one thing, and Brian, I know, is out here, and he's on the, he's on this, that's part of his job. And that's one thing that we have to be tasked on, is looking at everything when it's done. Even the English teacher's going to have to look and make sure it's well done right.
Elm Tree Court still has their meshes on there still.
Do you?
Yeah.
I believe you are.
The accident's a long time.
Greg and I will make sure, I'll make sure Greg comes out. Thank you for telling me. Is it right by your house? Okay.
In the yard.
Okay, in your yard, like, in the yard, yes? Okay, all right.
The water goes there, please.
And he did, he looked around at a lot of them, but I didn't even go over there. So I'll make sure he comes over and takes it out, because he did get it done like that after waiting for me. And he, he happened to drive by, and he's like, I got them all out. I did find some. I said, yeah, this should, that was just poor. Whatever. Okay, next, next part is, I was hoping I'd have more for you. I don't. The discussion about the renewal of City of Racine and the village mill and parks through contract. So, going back to the RCI CC meeting, well, going back even earlier. In January, I think everyone is aware that we got a letter from the city of Racine. It was a second notice that said they were terminating our sewer and water contract, or sewer contract. It was a second notice. We never got the first notice. You got to let me talk first. We never got the first notice. I showed it to Kendall, showed it to Latiria. We were kind of like, what is this about? Talked to Mark Kingston, our village attorney. Mark looked at it, started digging things up. We do have like an agreement that's like six, from, it's like from the sixties. And it was expiring in January of twenty twenty-five. So we, we did a lot of digging, and we did end up going to, I'm going to pull up something else, because I do have notes on this. But bear with me while I end it up with my phone. There was, there's been a lot that, well, a lot that has not been necessarily been done. This is the chain of, I've been taking notes since things happened. Paul Hornholdt from City of Racine emailed Latiria and sent her another letter saying, what's not a termination? It's just possibly a renewal. Paul is no longer the city administrator. We have a new city administrator in City of Racine. Also, know that we are not part of the sewer pact, and we not choose to be part of the sewer pact. We're not sure if they're raising rates. I've talked to Ernie about this. He was worried that they were adding meters to sewer lines. North Bay is in the same position we are. North Bay is a little bit different because they do have lines that go right into the backyards of their residents. In their backyards, they have actually kind of a flood. Theirs is a little bit different. I don't think we're in the same boat. But we are working with them and their village attorney to see what we, what can happen. So Latiria and I met with Mark on June thirteenth here in the village hall, right, for board meeting. Mark was going to reach out to Kikas and let me, I don't remember what his role is in the city.
He's the attorney.
Okay. And then, literally, I've been trying to get, we've been trying to get a hold of them in the city of Racine. No one was offered. I've talked to Dory in North Bay. I've talked to the president in North Bay. We haven't, they haven't found out anything either. Latiria saw Cory Mason at a fundraiser for Greta Newbar. He gave Latiria information to contact his office about sewer agreement. We have not heard anything from Cory Mason. And then last, two weeks ago, August twentieth, I was at the RCI CC meeting. This is the last thing I have before we talk to Mark Kingston. I cornered Joe Sullivan, who is the new city administrator in the city of Racine. And I asked him, what are we doing? It is now almost September. We have not gotten any word from the city of Racine. He would like Paul Hornholdt, Hornholdt, who was the previous city administrator, to take this issue on because he feels he knows more, is not the way I read that or understood it. We have not heard anything as of now. However, our attorney did let us know that he has reached out. He has talked to a couple of different people. And the next thing that's happening is we are possibly getting a meeting after September seventeenth. That's all I have. I don't have any updates. I don't know what the plan is. I don't, there is a notice in there that they cannot just terminate our sewer. Like, there is something in our, in the, like, it's not possible. But do know that we are on it, and it's frustrating for the village that they are not following through on it. We have not gotten an answer, and Mark Kingston hasn't gotten an answer. But that's all I have.
So the meeting happens on the seventeenth. Is that just with our village or is that North Bay or?
They're trying to get us both on the same page. This was just from. What Mark shared with them is we would request that we meet in the immediate future to discuss and begin formulating the groundwork for a new agreement, while as our desire to get a mutually amicable agreement in place will before the effective termination date. I would, Mark would also point out that for the agreement, page four, article eleven, or one eleven A, no party shall be privileged to exercise such right to termination without equal service, sewer service being assured. So we are working at getting a update and more information. I did email Mark immediately after the RCI CC meeting, just upset that it was almost September. Yes, Mr. Mills. Which it really should not be commenting, but I will let you go.
Thank you.
Yes, as former president.
The update that you're talking about, that they're thinking of terminating is over fifty-seven years old.
What we know.
And that was just a straight water agreement. The village, at the time they incorporated into a village, never signed the contract for sewer. There is no contract ever that has to be renewed for the village, because we are landline. We can't get any bigger, and that's why North Bay is also in the same boat. And I talked to Ken at the water department today at two o'clock this afternoon.
And Tom, I may have you just call our village attorney. If you would like to talk to Mark Kingston. He did talk to Ernie, and you were a former president.
He said that, he said that, he gave me the information that there is, since he is a resident in our village already, he said there is absolutely no contract because North Bay and us did not sign into the sewer agreement. That's why there was such kickback on the vacant land that is now our park that we bought, because they could not tie in to the sewer.
Right.
Or water. Because then they could retroactive back to the initial signing of a sewer contract, cost expended on the residents of our village. So your input, I appreciate you attending those meetings. I attended those, and they're very informative. They're very helpful, and that's why we have Johns for a contractor instead of waste management. There are things, there's things that are done because of learning from going to those meetings.
For sure.
And I encourage any trustee to attend one of those, because your interaction with the other governments throughout Racine County will open your eyes to many possibilities of things that would help our village.
Well, and I think the other, you know, I went to our attorney first. That will be my next step, is to reach out to him.
Here's all the agreements that have been written from two oh two all the way up. And they, they always talk about, well, what about Foxconn? Or what about all the deals in Mount Pleasant? Those are totally different, because they were in a tax increment district written into the guidelines when they wrote that district.
So, yes, this is a different amount.
And the big thing that they had now is because Microsoft took over or Foxconn didn't, they had another big article. they had another big article about the water service and they weren't going to provide them. That was, been dissolved this last week, that they are continuing and expanding and it's in the paper even.
Right, so.
If you can read it in our Journal Times, it's two days old.
So I'm hoping that we have some answers by the end of September and then I can share more with you in October at the next board meeting. Um, I will keep you posted, but there's just, there's not much to say because we really have not had a full meeting yet, um, which is frustrating, um, considering this came across our desk in January.
They shouldn't have anything to talk about because the village, they can't do anything more to the village.
But then why send us this letter? And then they did back up and say it was not a termination.
Because this is driven by the mayor, according to the executives that I talked to after talking to Ken. It's strictly driven by the mayor to get everyone on the same boat for the water and sewer contract. It is not, it hasn't even been devolved to the heads of some of these departments yet.
Right.
This is his brainstorm to increase taxes and make him look better.
So.
It's a threat to our village.
Correct.
About six, seven years ago, Keith Haas was in front of the board here and, I mean, he strong-armed everybody, tried to get him to sign the agreement and there's no reason for us to sign it, there's no advantage. You know, it was just, but he pushed for about two hours to try to get us to sign that.
The sewer pact agreement or the?
The sewer pact.
The sewer pact, yeah.
Yes. So we are working on it, we're, I mean, not working on it, but just trying to get an answer that is not.
They can't cut anything off from us.
Right. And Mark has done a very good job. And, and Tom, if you would like to talk later with me and maybe would like to talk to Mark Kingston?
And I'm, yeah, I'm also going to talk to Terry too about giving him a hand if he needs it.
Okay, oh, that'd be great, that'd be good to know. Um, thank you. Um, okay. I mean, give me a trouble, Tom. Let's get it next meeting, doesn't mean we just come and talk and all the things at the meeting. Join the board. We have an opening.
There's no, there's no opening tomorrow coming back.
There might be an opening in April.
Turn it to this.
Give you a hard time if he wants back on, just feel it. Okay, the last, before, um, our final point, I would like to have a short discussion and possibly approval of the snow removal, um, bid that we received. Um, let's just go with what you, like, how did you get people to bid because you did try?
Um, so we just put out the notice and then I've just reached out to people who are like in area contractors.
She, she milks a lot.
This open was there.
Guess what, we got one. It was from our previous. I was like, come on. Um, I don't know, I mean, I feel like we have to.
We need a snow removal.
We need a snow removal person, um, we do have the information about, did you see the RFP and how much it would cost? It went up a little bit. Um, I don't know if there's a, they don't have it?
No, I haven't seen it.
Oh, I have it right here. Okay, if you'd like to see it, I'll pass it around. Um, it has gone up a little bit, no, well, a little bit, not terribly much, um, dollars. I guess the one thing I would really like to ask them is, they do tear up the grass and we've got to see if there's any, they say they can go along the, um, the mailboxes, but there is one whole side of the street that does not have mailbox access. And I want to sit, I want to ask them if they're, if they ever put in stakes because our previous snow removal business that I'm really hoping maybe we could, we bring them back, but we did not, was not interested. Um, I, I would just love to see if there's something we can work out with them because I really am getting tired of them tearing grass and I'm really tired of them pouring dumping salt and charging us at times.
Well, that's true, too. They would put them in and then take them out.
Yeah, and that's what I want to see if asphalt would do. And I think that would remove the problem we're having with all the people putting up stakes all over and all the rebar and all the craziness, there's just a lot of stakes out right now, so.
Well, and at the very least, because they already, you know, with the, the layout of the village at this point, even if they just tell us where to put stakes.
Yeah, I mean.
I'll go, I'll go to Menards and put the stakes out, I don't even, like, that's fine.
I would just.
But I don't want to put them in a place and, and, and it's not going to matter.
I would just really like to have a conversation with them.
There'd be hundreds and hundreds of them, it's like, there's a last site, I have a straight road, here's one, there's one, there's one.
Please don't tear up the grass. And it's, I feel like part of it was because we had the roads done, tore up the grass and then part of it was, is asphalt does tear up the grass.
Did you?
Is there a moment?
So that is the bid, I, I don't want to make her wait until the next board meeting. I would just like to say, yes, we would like to use you and renew your contract.
And I appreciate the diligence of trying to get some.
We tried. I was like, if you talk to anyone else, is anybody going to do the bid? She literally got this to us today, right?
I, I did see it, I, I was at the county fair, I did see a truck and I'm like, maybe we just got the truck and I'll just wear it and grab the truck.
There you go.
Is Mike Hoppus not doing it anymore, is he out of it totally?
Well, he raised his rate so high.
Have you talked to him?
If you'd like to.
I talked to him.
That was, what was the name of that?
Mike Hoppus?
Yeah.
This building?
We also, he was, he wasn't really wanting to be back on the board, I can just feel it. We also, um, he, he got upset with some villagers that did not treat him very kindly.
I, well, there's three of them I know of, because he stopped by my house quite often.
If, I, you know, we, he'd have to put a bid in, the bid closed today and I, that makes me a little nervous.
All right.
But, um, he'd have to put a bid in, it was just, he, he went really, really high. But I, we appreciated his business a lot.
He was like.
And he likes the stakes that they put out. And he put out stakes every year and it was like, ooh, it's spring, they're taking the stakes out. It's spring this year. No, the stakes are like, winter is over, they're coming down. So we will go with asphalt unless we're eager from anyone else, but it's hard to do, I don't want to burn any bridges either. Um, okay, so we do have to vote on that, Tom, I don't know if we can, we can take.
Go ahead, vote, do what you're going to do.
I, I don't want to burn any bridges.
Well, you can.
You mean it's someone who applied for next year? Well, it's a two-year contract. Darn. She told me. All right, let's do an extension. I would like to vote on, um, extending the, I don't know, it's a, we only got one bid and I do like to have more than one bid. So, um, I'm not.
You're not required to.
I'm not going to vote on it and I'm not going to, I'm not going to prove it, I think we just.
We have a little bit of time, Tom, isn't he?
Let's table it and let her know that we just got this in and we, we do need at least one vote. And let's see if we do get any of our bids out.
Can we structure that in such a way that we don't have to necessarily wait until October's meeting?
No, I, yes, I think so.
So that if barring anything else, like any other, you know, bid or whatever that are appropriate or not appropriate, that doesn't advance the ability to sign a contract?
Okay, so, um.
I'll catch them right now.
Yes, I think that, I like the way that you say that, that I think if we will make an, we will make an approval of a snow removal company that is in the best interest of the village, um, within the next week. Um, or two, and I'm not going to vote on it, I'm just going to let it go. We're just going to make a decision, will we do that? No, right? We got to make, we got to vote.
It has a money amount.
So I got to wait, I got to wait until October or have a quick, very special board meeting to vote approval.
Well, yes, that's fine.
So I'm just going to table it for now and then if we need to have a special board meeting to get anything else in. Um.
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm okay with a special board meeting, if you get another possible move.
Okay, let's just, let's, let's table it for now and then we'll just have a special board meeting and see if we get anything else in. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sure Laura will be fine, I mean, maybe for, you'd like to see all of us, I'm sure.
I'm certain.
I'm certain you're good. Come back for like five minutes. Um, I'm, okay, so the last item, resolution approval accounts payable, did you guys all look at this? Wait, Kendall. Okay, everyone, please look through that right now. No, just look at the top. No, I will look at, well, I didn't see it, the, the office has been packed with disaster with the windows, so if you want to just sign up on that. No, it's just, it's on the top, the other one's just for me, it's on the top. So I need a resolution, um, for approval of accounts payable, I need a first.
Motion for a resolution accounts payable.
First by Stewie, second. Second by Kendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. The ice jacket, so pass. And we are adjourned at eight of November twelfth.